It's 5:30. I'll call the special meeting to order tonight. It is a special meeting and discussion will be limited to the two items on the agenda. The first item is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing for the revised 2018 budget and the proposed 2019 budget. Are you going to?
Yeah.
Mike will present.
Yes, I'll run through it real quickly, then we can field any questions. Okay, looking at what we had presented originally, and we have made a few updates per the request of the commission. One of the requests was to reduce the mill levy back down to 2017 levels. So we have done that. With that, the assessed valuation has went down $669,000 from 2018 to 2019. The tax lid prohibits any adjustments of the tax levy in excess of 1.4% except for allowable expenses, which we have not done that, so we are in compliance there. The maximum levy without an election is $2.78 million. So again, the levy for 2019 as well as 2018 is approximately $2.6 million. The 2019 rate, mill rate, would be 54.087. Another big thing that we did see is the Blue Cross health insurance went up 8.5% for Above is just the breakout of the levies and the rates for each budgeted ad valorem fund and a comparison back to what it was in 18. And here is the publication that was put in the budget for the public hearing. On this slide, this represents what the changes were that were made to what we originally presented to the commission on the 17th of July. These changes were put into effect and are represented in the balances that you see today. Questions, Gary?
Any questions?
So here is the difference in the valuations as well as the changes in the actual levy, which there is no change in the levy from 2019 to 2018. And on this table right here, this represents what the impact, the change of the mill rate and the valuation would do to a house that was valued at $100,000 in 2018. That mill levy would be $613 with the 2019 change, with no change in the valuation, not making any adjustments, leaving the valuation the same. At the mill rate that we have for this year, the levy would go up $8.54. And also looking at the average house value in Independence, the change in what that cost would be with no change in valuation would be $5.98. Now, we don't know exactly how that reduction in the assessed valuation is going to hit every property, but assuming that it was equally spread out, the bottom part of it shows you what the impact is with the change in the valuation on a $100,000 house. If that $100,000 house was reduced in value to $98,000, then you would actually see a decrease in your overall payment of the mill levy by $2.92. And likewise, on the average house value of $70,000, you would see a reduction in your ad valorem payments of $2.04. Here is the general fund revenue by source. We're seeing a slight increase of $184,000 in the 2019 budget over the 2018 revised And here's a pie chart there that just shows the breakout allocations of all the different Questions?
No.
So some of the highlights, what we're seeing in the revenue side of things, the sales tax, we left that flat at 1.931 million. The actual property tax projected up over 2018 by 267,000. The assessed valuation, and this slide is actually wrong, it was more than that. I forgot to update this slide. It's actually 902,500. This is the change in assessed valuation from 2018 to 2019. Oh, that's okay. The mill rate for the general budget for 2019 is 34.9. It was 29.6 in 2018. 2019 includes the five mills for the capital reserve fund. And then it lists out some of the other income increases in 2018 revised and the 2019. We have an appropriated fund balance of $122.80 in 2019. And here is a breakout of the revenue as it's distributed by departments in the general fund. Again, the primary revenue source in the general fund is through administration, and that's mostly due to where the taxes are collected at. On the expenditure side, there's a breakout by the different categories for all the departments collectively. Overall, we're seeing a $420,000 increase over the revised 2018 and a $185,000 increase over the 2018 approved budget. That does include transfer out, which is an expenditure of $240,000 for your capital Is that five mill? Yes. Here's a breakout of the allocation of all the expenditures. Questions? Still looking it through?
Not yet.
Okay.
The $9,000 proposed for City Hall, is that? That's the 1916 City Hall?
Yes, yeah. That's electric and just, I think there's $1,500 in there for just general maintenance. Now we'll run through, we'll get the three enterprise funds real quick here. And here's some of the key highlights from the 2019 budget. The big thing is having the fuel farm improvements out there that we've done that should help drive sales. We'll have that all of 2018 and 2019 now. In addition, the farm ground rental income should be significantly higher than what we've seen through 2017 and portions of 2018. Big things here, we are seeing the disoperating in a positive balance both 2017, 2018, and 2019. The water rate increases were scheduled to go up 6.5% in 2019. With the changes that we made, we were able to pull that back down to 6%. The reimbursement to the general fund was reduced back down to 2018 levels, and those are the corresponding percentages of total of revenue. You can see it was 12.4 for 18 and scheduled to be 11.7 for 2019.
Now, we've set $200,000 for 2018 and for 2019 for the improvements at the water plant and improvements at the wastewater facility. So, but it's looking like, as far as West Star is concerned, their part as far as upgrading what they need to do to get a new point of service to the existing water plant may not happen until the end of the year or after the first of the year.
That could be, and I mean, once we get a little bit closer, I think we're actually with. Craig, can you give me an update or give them an update, when are we supposed to provide them some additional information from PEC on the water treatment plan upgrade?
They were waiting for final design for West Star, and West Star's got that information to them, so I haven't received anything further than maybe Terry has anything further, but they send us a weekly thing, which I often include in the AR.
If our special meeting is for budget, if it doesn't directly relate to the budget, we probably should wait till next week to discuss it.
So we have it allocated there. If it doesn't happen, it doesn't happen.
The money, we can discuss the allocation of the funds.
Sure, sure, absolutely.
But I think actually the details relating to the project is beyond the scope of our hearing.
Okay. So. Okay, questions on that? There's just a look at what the reimbursements throughout the course of the last 10 years, 11 years have looked like, as a percentage of revenue. So we have seen them fall back down into what's deemed acceptable levels. One big thing just to note, so I did put a notation in there on the new sanitation truck. It's in the budget. We will not be doing anything, making any purchase on that until we do a full analysis on what that service is going to look like going forward. Okay, the rest of them are just the other funds, and I'll just put those up there. There's three per page, and there's four pages of them, so I'll give you a minute just Okay, any questions on those?
Okay, with the public hearing, first I'll open to the public. Debbie has submitted a request to address the...
The 2019 budget seems to be a little status quo that has failed to include any significant savings proposals. I would like to offer some thoughts on the 2019 budget in hopes the 2020 budget may be far more beneficial to our city, our city employees, and us taxpayers. First, the city must aggressively explore options that may result in significant savings, such as contracting out its trash and ambulance services and finding a comparable but more affordable health insurance provider. Savings in those areas may result in more funds being available for other areas such as our decaying streets and water lines. Secondly, a town the size of Independence does not need a director of public safety. However, it desperately needs a city engineer who could save us taxpayers the hundreds of thousands of dollars we have spent on outside consultants over the last several years. Thirdly, in the last two and a half years, the city has wasted $2 million of our tax dollars on the unnecessary move to Building D and expenditures related to supporting two city halls. That's a lot of money that could have otherwise been spent on emergency services equipment, needs of the cemetery, park, zoo, and aquatic center, more personnel and equipment for mowing, and needs of other departments. Vacating Building D would result in even more funds available to meet the city's needs. Lastly, some of our tax dollars have been budgeted to pay highly compensated city employees whom over the last year have not fully or competently completed their jobs. We have paid our city manager and city clerk over $175,000 in pay and benefits, and yet the city's financial records have been inaccurate and unreliable. Various financial documents have not been filed in compliance with the laws, and most recently, the city has appeared on the delinquent tax list. It's not fair to expect us taxpayers to continue to pay those kinds of employees. But what's more, it's not fair to those city employees that work outside in all sorts of horrific weather or work in challenging offices job, but nonetheless do their jobs. It's absolutely insane for you commissioners to continue to force us taxpayers to pay employees for not doing their jobs. Long before the 2020 budget season arrives, you commissioners must find and hire a city manager who's progressive, who'll get things done in a timely manner, who'll manage our tax dollars prudently, and who'll do his or her job and ensure all other employees do theirs. If you fail to do so, the city's financial health may little improve. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. Are there any other citizens?
I'll be very brief. Andy Taylor, 134 Wood Lane Drive. I also own a commercial property at 422 West Main. First of all, I appreciate the thoroughness of the City of Independence's budget process and the information that has been disseminated. I've attended budget workshops and budget hearings for 25 years and many other entities, and this is probably the most thorough of any entity that I cover, so kudos to city staff for that. What I've given you is a simple spreadsheet that shows the total ad valorem tax rate for a City of Independence resident. And I'm speaking here from a 50,000-foot level, not from a city's perspective, but just total taxation. My billfold does not know the difference between city taxes and county taxes. It's the same one check that goes for all those entities. This is just going back to 2014, and the spreadsheet, of course, all the numbers are expressed in terms of mills. In 2014, the city resident was paying an ad valorem tax rate of 170.151 mills. If all of the budgets are approved as they are published by the entities that we support for 2018, it'll be 201 mills. I never thought I would see the day that I would live in a community where the total millage is in the 200s. That is asinine. It is very, very difficult as a taxpayer to justify an existence in Independence. My wife and I own a very simple house, nothing opulent, 1,700 square feet ranch, 53 years old. We own a very simple commercial property, nothing opulent, 3,700 square feet, where we love living here. Combined taxes is now $8,000. Granted, the mill increase for all the entities is only going to be about four mills, that's still a lot of money that comes out of my pocket. I don't have anywhere else to go to that. It's just absolutely more and more difficult twice a year when we have to go to the courthouse and write that big check, and I ask the question, what am I getting out of that? What are you getting out of that? We love the services, we support the services, we want good services, but at the same time as a taxpayer, I have to ask the question, at some point, when do we stop? When do we just keep, stop escalating the burdens? And it is now a true, true burden. 18.6% increase in total ad valorem tax rate, that's the tax rate, not the amount of taxes. That's the assessment of your taxes. Has gone up 18.6% in just four years. Wow. I'm carrying the same speech to the other entities. You're not the only one to hear my sermon, but ICC, the county, the school board is very much aware of my feelings. I was wanting to break that out to you to show what the bills have been for each of those entities in the past four years. You can see what's happening for the city. It has gone up 14 mills in just four years. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. Are there any other citizens that'd like to speak during the public hearing? Tony?
At a public hearing, it's not required. I've got two things. First of all, I want to thank Mike and whoever provided all this information. I know there's not very many people here, but it's appreciated for those that are here. And it's very good, a lot of information. My second concern is, I was looking at the 2018 budget, looking at stuff, and I noticed, I've prepared the budget now for the city for 28 years. There's a line item on these forms called unappropriated balance. Non-appropriated balances included. I went back and looked at 10, 15 of my budgets, and that was never put in there, so I figured maybe it was something new that's happened over the last three years that people use it. It's always been there, it's always been available, but it's just never been used. I started looking at the numbers. I forwarded a spreadsheet onto the mayor with my concerns. The way it was figured up, you come up with a total tax that you're going to levy, your resources available minus your expenses, gives you a tax rate. Pretty simple, it's always been done. And that budget, they put that amount in there, almost $800,000 that the taxes was actually figured on, which is an additional 14 mills, over 14 mills. I've gone back through those numbers. It's supposed to be some kind of ending balance. I have checked treasure statements, added, subtracted. I cannot come up with that number. The big problem I have with it, according to the Department of Records up in Topeka, that amount's only limited to 5% of your expenses. So right there, you're a budget violation of budget laws for 2018. Still couldn't figure it out. I've looked at, I go back and look through the individual pages, and I see adjustments made to everything, other encumbrances, AFB, which I presume is that fund balance thing, subtracting, adding, subtracting. So I thought maybe it was just for the 2018 budget, based on what the legislator did with the CPI stuff. I know probably every city in the state jacked that mill rate up so you wouldn't have to go for an election if you wanted to raise taxes. But then I get this budget here, and I see it's the same thing. There's the same amount in there. The general fund, $317,000, means you're figuring taxes on that amount of money. The one that really caught my eye was on your debt service, a non-appropriated balance put in there of over a million bucks. I would just like to know how those numbers are being calculated and where they come from, because I can't figure it out. And it's on every one of the tax funds, that's the one that concerns, if that amount's in there, taxes are being figured on those. Last year, like I said, for 18, it was a little over 14 mills. I'm sure the mayor has the spreadsheet I sent him. It's all right there. And I wonder if this is going to be better or worse, I don't know, but I'll look at it later and find out. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens that want to address the commission during, or address the topic for a public hearing? the topic for a public hearing? If not, I'll close the public hearing and open this for commission discussion. Do you have any questions?
No, at this point.
On the budget sheets that were assembled to be turned into the county clerk, the non-appropriated balance continues with, into 2019, we have that. Can you explain that amount, what it's from or what it represents?
That represents the ending fund balance, and it is at 5%. I do understand that there were a couple last year that were over the 5% level. So, we have made the adjustments there. Previously, to have a ending cash balance, there's an expenditure added into the, into the line items there to cover that cash contingency. So, it was inflating expenditures. So, we wanted to get away from that, get back to true values there. So, we've taken that out of there, and we're representing it there, and then with appropriated fund balance and adjusting it up back up in the revenue section.
If, if that's a cash balance, then wouldn't it be subtracted? Well, for example, on page 8A, you've got $7,394,299, the non-appropriated balance of 317,090. If that's a cash balance of unappropriated funds in the account, wouldn't that be subtracted from the expenses instead of added to the expenses?
No, the expenses are what they are. That would be the total amount of what budgetarily there is. See, your, your ending cash balance plus your expenditures. You'll notice on there that that does not change the, the authority spending for the budgets.
Right.
You know, that's clearly stated out. So, that there's our authority. We can't exceed that.
Right.
As it was previously done, that $317,000 would have been put into expenditures, and it would have inflated the statutory authority of the expenditures, in this case, to $7.7 million, even though there was no intention to spend those funds. However, it does create a risk that those dollars could be spent because they are authorized.
But if the money is, we got the unencumbered cash balance line that's left zero. If that is representing a cash balance that the money is not allocated for anything, it's surplus, then how does that become an expense?
It is not an expense. That's, that's how it was budgeted previously.
But it's, in this sheet, it's added to the expenditures, and it's listed under total expenditure slash non-appropriated balance. The number goes up.
So, the total expenditures go up, and then it adds back in the non-appropriate balance? Yes. But that's not saying that those, it's saying those funds are not appropriated. That's, that's what we're supposed to have left. I can't explain to you why the state has that added together, but...
If I got, if I got $20 extra in my account that I haven't spent, and I figure my expenses, and I want to know my total expenses, the $20 that I got in my account doesn't go to my expenses and make my expenses $20 more?
And nor does it make it, your expenses $20 left. But when you add your expenses and what you had left, that was, that was everything that you had.
But when I'm, when I'm looking at the resources available, wouldn't that include the ending balance money?
No, it does not.
I think the intent from what I was looking at statute and some of the other information that the non-appropriated balance was to give some carryover cash from the end of the year to the first payment received. So, it doesn't really tie to, it's kind of a basic way the statute's allowing you to generate some surplus.
Correct.
So, it's not based on what we already have. It's allowing us to create a surplus to operate.
Yeah, I mean, you carry a fund balance for a variety of reasons. One of them is cash flow, because obviously, property tax doesn't come in at, you know, at the right time. So, you need a cushion like that, fund balance, to operate for cash flow purposes. Plus, it's basically kind of a savings account. It's often called different things, unrestricted fund balance. So, if something major happens, you can use that in, in a time of need. And that's why the, the state here limits it to 5%, which I, it's the lowest I've ever seen in my career. It's usually states allow 15% to 20% or more, depending on, on the fund. But state says 5% here, that's what we can carry. So, we carry that 5% for those reasons, just like you say. But it's not in the expenditures. It's unrestricted and cash balance. It doesn't show as an expenditure. I, I couldn't understand it when I first came, Mike explained, said, we look back in like 2017, 2016. And as Mike said, that was actually being budgeted. They were zeroing out the budget, saying, they were showing that, they put it in a cash reserve account, called a cash reserve, but it was actually the fund balance. And so, when you looked at the budget, everything came out to zero. And there, that was something new to me, but, but so, they were budgeting it as an expenditure in the past. This is, it shows it is not an expenditure, it's just unallocated.
Yeah. Well, you know, I...
Your savings again, I mean.
Yeah. But it, but when it's described as an ending cash balance, it's false. It's a fund that's generated by taking your expenses and taking and increasing it by 5%. That's what it is. It's not an ending fund balance. It's not money we already had. It's, we're generating 5%. We're increasing our expenditures by 5% to give us an operating balance.
We're not increasing it by 5%. That, that is fund balance.
Fundators are what they are. Because your total expenditures are $7,394,299.
Correct.
Correct. Okay. Then 5% of that is 317,090, right?
That's right.
Okay. Then you add those two to get your total expenditure of 7,711,389.
It's not an expenditure. It's not an expenditure.
Well, no, I'm just reading what this line says.
It says your total expenditures and non-appropriated fund balance. That balance is 7.7 million.
So, it's the total of the two, basically?
Yes, yes.
But then to get the tax required, you subtract your resource available from the $7,711,000, and you get $1,678,826, right?
That's right.
So, the 317,000, $317,090 increased the expenditures.
It didn't increase the expenditures. That, that will be an ending fund balance if, if everything plays out the budget exactly as it's put in the paper, which it will not. That would be the ending fund balance.
It increased the number that we're raising taxes on, the 317,000 did, right?
That's, yes, you could say that, yes.
So, it formed a number that's total expenditures slash non-appropriated balance. So, it increased, it added to the total expenditure.
If, if, if this had been done previously, they would have put that 317 in...
I'm just trying to understand.
No, that's, that's correct. So, that is the ending balance. If I had a zero in there in this case, it would lower those taxes, but we'd have $0 left. Nothing. Nothing at all. Our ending cash balance would be zero, and that's dangerous.
Because in the resource available, is that the, from, that's from the last year? I just, you know, when, when we look at, at the mill levy increase, and we base it on, on a percentage, and like for 2018, that increased by 14 mils, 14.858 mils. That's what, almost 700, 700, 750,000?
On last year, on the general fund? I, I don't have those particular, I mean, that would be approximately correct based on the numbers you've, you've stated right there.
But then, you know, we're, we're also doing this on our industrial or enterprise funds that we're charging a rate to, too, aren't we?
What do you mean?
We're adding the non-appropriated balance to the sewer, water, and sanitation.
That's, there again, that's just fund balance is, is all that is. But they're, they're not ad valorem funds, so that, that doesn't really come into play. It only comes into play on the six, six budgeted ad valorem funds. The other funds, you're not restricted.
Are the industrial, the industrial fund is a combination? Is that the combination of the water, sewer, and sanitation?
No, no, it's that, that's fund four. This is what the industrial fund is.
What is, what's covered in industrial?
Oh, that, the payments in there are to MAC and to the Chamber.
And the Chamber's 2,500 and MAC is 25,000?
Yeah.
But on the, on the revised here, what I'm looking at, it shows non-appropriated balance for that industrial fund, $60,743. And I'm not sure whether I'm looking at the last, the latest revision, because I've got several copies here. And this is the one that showed that we were over the 5% limit on the general fund, the bond interest fund, the industrial fund, the general fund, employee benefit fund.
No, this, this one's changed. It's at the 5%.
Okay.
They're all at the 5%.
Because our budget authority is set on the total expenditures.
Yes.
But the amount of ad valorem property tax is, is based upon the higher number, the 707, 7,711,389.
So, which fund are you on?
General fund.
Go back to general.
Page number one. I'm comparing the figure shown on page one with the budget authority column and the ad valorem tax column.
Let me take another stab at this. Let's see if I can. Going back to not page, to page eight, not 8A. On page eight is a list of all our revenue, if you will. If you look down at the bottom, it says total receipts of $5,698,270. That's what you see the total of, except for that top line of unencumbered cash balance.
Uh huh.
And that, so the second line down there is those added together.
Right.
So, all that's saying is those are the total resources you have. If you need to cover in your budget over here, that's what you have. But you don't have to use that allocated fund balance.
Non-appropriated fund balance.
I mean, appropriated, you don't have to use that fund balance that's showing there. It's just saying you have that as a resource available, which we took $123,000 and did put it into our budget to use as a resource. But we didn't use it all, and we kept it at 5%. I don't know if this is making it any worse, but it's basically saying, you know, you have revenues and expenditures, and if you have any excess over, it goes into a unrestricted fund balance. And last year said we started, we started the year with 334,294, which we could use to allocate, which is, we have done a part. Did I make it any clearer? But that's basically it is, is you're, we're not, we're not putting that fund balance on page there, 317,000. We're not putting that as an expenditure.
It is not an expenditure.
Because it's not an expenditure.
It is not budgeted.
It's an unrestricted, that's why I call it, we, I've seen it in audits, different ways, but it's unrestricted fund balance that you can't use, you can't allocate in the next year, which in my budget history, we usually allocated fund balance for capital expenditures, for one-time capital expenditures, if you don't want to use that fund balance for operating. And 123,000, I mean, that's, all goes to the capital that we have appropriated. So, that's why I'm just confusing it. It's not an expense there. But I'm, I'm new to this sheet, you know, I've never done one of these, but just looking at that, that's what it says to me.
Well, when you're looking to determine the tax monies required, and the 317,090 isn't increasing your expenses, then why don't you subtract the $6,32,563 from the Because it, it looks to me that the 317,090 is increasing what's got to be covered by taxes required because of the difference between two numbers.
That is correct. That, I mean, what you're saying is accurate.
Yeah.
Yes. But if you, you have to put that number in there, it has to be shown somewhere. It's to either be shown there, and the 5% that we're authorized to have on hand as reserves, it's either got to be shown there, or it's got to be shown as an expenditure which inflates your budget, and you get to the same place, and you end up with the same ad valorem. To not do that, if you remove that number from that non-appropriated fund balance section... To not do that, if you remove that number from that non-appropriate fund balance section, it would reduce the ad valorem taxes, however, you would be left with zero cash in that fund. That's all, that's all it's doing.
Right.
So it's saying, hey, when we're all said and done, we want 317,000 left.
So.
Have cash balance.
So what it, what it is, it's not an ending fund balance?
It is.
It's not an ending fund balance. What it is, is a way to generate revenue to operate, so you don't end with a zero balance. And by law, it says you can increase it up to 5%. And by doing that, then you're, you're, you're saying, we need to generate 5% more of our expenses for a cushion.
That, to have a cash reserve, yes.
But we're not, but it's, we're starting with 334,000. You know, this isn't to say that the not, the ending fund balance, you know, is, we're starting with it already. We have that, we already have a fund balance. So we're not, what you're saying is we're raising taxes on that, on this 317,000 to get that 5%. And no, we already had enough fund balance.
And, and, yeah, I mean.
We already had a fund.
You didn't.
We, we don't, you know, it has built up year to year. We haven't see, every year, as Mike said, we don't zero out the budget. We don't appropriate the fund balance every year. Or, or, or you would be right exactly, that we would have to raise the, the rate to, to generate 5% if the previous budget had been zeroed out and we'd spent all our, our, all our unrestricted fund balance.
The line item that says tax required, it includes the 1,678,828. It includes some of the 317,090. Because you can't take two numbers and add together to get a total, and subtract another number from those total without having a combination of the three numbers.
Right. And I mean, they're, they're, they're taking that, I mean, I, the, from what I see, what I understand.
See what I'm saying?
Nope. I've understood most of it, but I didn't understand that. We, we, we're starting with this beginning balance of 334,000. So we're ending with a cash reserve. It's not as great as 334, but it's in the neighborhood. 5% ending balance. So this also takes into account our beginning balance of 334.
Okay. I've got.
You gonna draw me a picture?
I've got A plus B minus C equals tax required. So I've got A, 300, or 7,394,299. I've got B, 317,90. Because that equals, that equals D, I guess. Then this is minus C, and it equals that. Is that right?
Let me think a minute.
Okay. Because this plus that equals that.
Okay.
This minus that equals that.
Okay.
This then comes over here, and that's what based on our mill to determine how much money we need.
Right. But again, this 6 million dollars includes our beginning balance, right?
And that beginning balance is the ending balance.
No, this is, this is the resources available, which is total receipts and the beginning balance, the cash balance as a general.
Right.
So we're just saying we want a cash balance at the end of the year. It's actually not as great as the one at the beginning of the year.
But when this is added to that, increases the tax here.
Right.
Right.
But, but we've deducted for this opening balance.
Because that comes down into here.
Right. It's included in the 6 million.
Okay, so that comes over to here.
Right.
Okay. These come down to there. Then you add that in and get this. Then you take that from that and get that.
The.
Right?
That, that one, 1,678,826 is based on the 7,711,389. Is that correct? Minus the 6,32,563.
That's 317,90. Minus 1,63. 1, 6, 7, 8. Exactly. That then comes over here, which is.
Yeah, that's what it is.
Based ad valorem tax on. So this affects that, which affects the tax.
The ending balance does.
That. This is the ad valorem.
Right.
Tax.
Okay.
Okay.
But I, I still don't understand why, why it's an issue. I mean, it would make sense that whatever we want the ending balance to be would be included in there.
I guess.
Because we want an ending balance of 5%. I mean, we've always, the three of us have always agreed, we want to build up some reserves if we can, and the maximum we're allowed is 5%, so.
The reserve that we wanted to build up was 5 mil, became 14 mil, or with our 5 mil, became 19 mil. It just keeps, you know, it's. I guess what, what started is, you know, it hadn't been done before at all. And I'd like to see the forms where it's included in the past as part of what you're saying it was, and maybe that'll explain.
I mean, I, I can, I can show you some of the old budgets.
Yeah, that might.
And show you where it's at. I mean, they're, they're in there. It, and.
Yeah, I've looked back at those two to try and find a non-appropriate number, and I can't. But then, you know, the first question was, what was that amount? And it was, uh, an ending fund balance.
But it was listed in the expenditures, and it went in to authorize expenditure budget authority.
Yeah.
So it inflated your budget authority.
Came from firstly, explanation of an, uh, ending fund balance, but it's really the 5% of the expenses.
Which will be our ending fund balance.
That's our plan, is to have an ending balance equal to 5%.
Yes. If I remove that out of there.
But then.
Then it is. It would reduce your, your mill levy. But you would end up with zero cash. None. At the end of the year. We want that 5% cushion. Things change. You know, we don't want to deplete everything. I mean, it's just like, you know, your paycheck. When you pay your bills, you hope you have some money left over each month. Well, this is a, a scenario where we're authorized to reserve 5% cash on hand, and that's what we've done. Your other five mills is pulled out of this fund. We, we did use it in 18. But 19, that five mills is being pulled out and put into, uh, Fund 12, if I recall correctly, which is your capital, capital reserve fund. And so that's, that's separate. That's, that's a different deal. Yeah. Mm-hmm.
Which one, the general fund?
Well, it, it happened in numerous funds.
Well, I, I'm, I'm just looking for the one I saw, the one.
Uh, yeah, in the general fund, special improvements.
Special improvements. That's what I'm asking.
What was it, what was it listed in?
Special improvements. It's called cash contingency. And I, I mean, that's just for the general fund.
What year was that?
That, that particular one was in 17.
2017?
Yeah.
The 2016, 2017 budget book? Okay.
Yeah, that's not the one I was looking at.
So all we're saying is, is that expenditure, it wasn't a real expenditure. It's put in there to inflate what that authorized spending was, that, that then the ad valorem would cause the ad valorem to be at that level. We've removed that and said, this is what we're really spending, and we anticipate having this 5% left cash on hand at the end of the year. Same thing, just a different way of getting there. But we're not over inflating our, our budget authority on the expense side. Because technically, if you overinflate that, we have authority, it could be spent. And I don't think that that's what we want to do.
I think some of the confusion is, do you have the, the cash ending balance from the previous year, do you have to show that as a revenue on the next year's budget?
No.
Only if you allocate part of it as a revenue.
It, it's.
You have to.
Unbalanced. It's there, and it's derived from total resources. That carries over.
And you look, you look at the 2016 audit, any audit, you look at the financial statements, you'll see down the old, you know, money spent, revenue comes in, money spent, and you, and down there, you'll have a line item called, as I was saying, unrestricted fund balance. It's not allocated. It's just, that's why it's called unrestricted.
Or non-appropriate.
Or non-appropriate, unallocated, unrestricted.
Yeah.
Because sometimes you can have, sometimes they'll also have lines of restricted fund balance. Restrict for certain things, specific things, but. But what we're talking about here is unrestricted fund balance. I'm just trying to find that.
But, but you're still collecting taxes on that amount plus.
It, if, yes, if you remove it out of there.
So you're still collecting taxes on, on that total amount.
Yeah.
It's that.
To, to allow you.
727,500, whatever that amount.
Absolutely. To, to allow us to have an ending fund balance. We want a positive cash balance at the end of the year.
I think the confusion comes, when I asked, you said the ending fund balance.
Right.
You didn't say it was for the, the year to come.
Right.
You said you, I asked where the number came from, and you said it was our ending fund balance, which would assume that would be the start of 2019.
The previous year. No, I, 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 I'm sorry. That was, that was just miscommunication there. Now, is, it's after the year is done, that's, that's what's left.
So what you're doing is you're creating an ending fund balance for 2019.
Right. 5%.
Yes.
Because, and that's the maximum we can.
Yeah.
Right. See, when, when you wrote ending fund balance in my email, I was looking at it beginning, that it was an ending fund.
Ending for the previous year. Right. This is going forward.
2017.
Yeah. Now, this is after 2019's over.
Yeah.
That's what that number represents.
That's where I was confused. And that's where it came on through, that, you know, you're saying it's money we already had, but it's money we're going to get to end the year with. By raising 5% of our expenses, so at the end of the year, we should have, in general fund, what, 317?
That's what we're projecting.
Yeah, 317,90.
That's the projected to ending fund balance.
It's projected into.
Right.
Yeah.
Revenue is over expenditures.
Yeah. The, uh, the terms are, are vague enough that it gets confusing then looking. And then looking at the two, the 2017 budget to see where we're going with this budget without having, that's why it's nice to have these before the meeting. That we can look and answer our question, ask our questions, or come prepared. But that one, was the one I was looking at with the questions, and you said ending fund balance. And I looked back at the treasurer's report to try and match a number there, and they don't match, and they didn't, they exceeded the 5% also. So that was a, a problem of, where is the number coming? And then carrying the thought through to what we got here of an ending fund balance and understanding a 5%, that basically, we're taking our expenses, increasing the expenses projected by 5% so we can generate an ending balance at the end of the year that matches that. We can't spend it because our authorized balance is, is, or expenditure, what is it called?
Yeah, that you're.
Authorized expenditures is set at the figure without that 5% in.
That's right. So if we, if we have to exceed that, 7, 7,394,000, then we have to amend the budget.
Right.
Previously, if we included in the expenses, we could spend it because it's within approved budget authority.
You can spend it down to zero.
And you end up with zero.
With all that, right.
So this, this creates a safety net for us.
Okay.
Clear?
It's clearer now. Yeah.
Yeah. I, I, I apologize. It, it was confusing.
These are all good questions, and, you know, I mean, I, I was looking at this sheet, and I was getting confused as well. I haven't seen a sheet like this, but this is how you report to the state. I've seen state reports, and everyone, I guess, is kind of different, but, so, these are good questions. Hopefully, we can.
Yeah.
Clarify and answer them.
The, you know, looking at, at other, uh, entities, they don't use the non-appropriate balance. You know, I think there's some question on the state level to look at changing or to clarify that also. So, you know, I, I've spent a lot of time looking at the budget, the previous budget, and making sure that I understood what we're going to sign, and that's where, with the questions I had for you. And, you know, without having this to compare it, and looking at the fund balance in December, then, you know, basically trying to project our ending balance of 2018, that would be plugged in to that non-appropriate balance.
You can't even, actually even look at the ending balance in, in 2017, because you have to take into account encumbrances as well.
Right.
So it's unencumbered cash. Because if there's an encumbrance there, that, that money's already spoken for.
I think in the 2017, it actually, in capital improvements, in expenses, it had listed committed capital or committed funds. I forget what it was called.
Yeah, I, it was cash contingency is, is what I saw. Now, it, it might have been listed as something else on these sheets. I don't know.
Then just kind of explaining how this is going to. just kind of explaining how this is gonna track from year to year.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. We had, in two thousand eighteen, we had non-appropriate funds. Balance was put in there, and we set our spending limit by the expenditures. So, the money that we end the year with carry over there, where is that shown? Is that shown in your reserve?
So, in the next year, it would go, it would begin, it'd be your beginning cash balance for that next year.
Let me, while we're. So, for the end of two thousand eighteen, is that gonna be the unencumbered cash balance, January one, that's shown in the year two thousand nineteen?
Granted, it's a budget, I mean, things change, but, yes. If this all works out exactly as you see it on paper here today, yes, that'd be your beginning cash balance for January one, two thousand nineteen, which.
Twenty twenty.
No, he's talking about twenty-eight, twenty-eight.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
Well, no, I'm, I'm trying to see. Since we did this li, this year.
Right.
And we set up a reserve in each fund to have X number of dollars at the end of the year in each fund.
Mm-hmm.
Then, is that reflected in the two thousand?
Nineteen.
Nineteen.
Yep, so, it, it's down at your bottom of the page on eight A. If you follow the year down, for two thousand eighteen, it's three hundred and thirty-four, two ninety-four. All right?
Where?
Here, let me see.
On page eight A?
Eight A, under, unencumbered cash balance, December thirty-first.
So, come down here, get this, year's over, now it carries back up to.
Here.
Something's sat down or something.
So, the, does this match what we increased for two thousand eighteen? Or did we spend?
Eighteen's not over yet.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's, it is a number, but these numbers are projected numbers. They're projected, they're not budget numbers, it's, it's what we say, we may go on the spin.
Okay. So, the, some of, of our balance will be absorbed into reduced sales tax or ad- form tax decrease? Because what we're.
It, it, I mean, yes, it absolutely could, because if, if revenues go down, then, then you have that balance to absorb that.
Well, back to general fund, where we're looking at three hundred and seventeen thousand, ninety dollars.
Mm-hmm.
That's not a firm ending balance, because if sales taxes is down.
Right.
If revenue.
It's gonna get absorbed if you don't.
Police, finance, any of those.
Right, if you, if you spend every dollar that's on there, just as it's laid out, and then your revenues decline based on what's projected, then it starts eating into that balance.
Yeah.
Or if sales tax increases more than we projected, which.
And that goes, yeah.
You have a larger ending balance.
Non-appropriate balance is really a, a projected ending balance.
Correct.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Words are important. And, you know, I said I wouldn't misunderstand next time.
That you did. You, you did. So, I mean, they're very good questions, so.
Appreciate the patience, because.
No, that's okay.
Yeah.
No, that's why I say these are good questions. I mean, it's, it's getting it clear in, in, in my mind, kind of what's, what's happening here on this spreadsheet.
It's getting the terms and the track, and, you know, there was, you know, how we responded on the two, the questions with two thousand eighteen led to, to here, and, you know, not being clear, and that's what, you know, keep going back and forth to, to see the. But I think when you, when you look at, at changing from generic words of non-appropriate to what it really is, is, is developing a contingency fund, we'd say in construction.
Yeah.
And statute says we can generate five percent contingency to cushion any shortfalls of revenue.
Correct.
And then, the non-appropriate is a projected ending balance.
Yes.
That you're trying to create.
Yes.
It's, it's understandable.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah.
Well, that's, I think I don't have any questions regarding that now.
Yeah.
Any questions?
I do not, Mr. Mayor.
Thank, thank you for getting to the point where we've got to, because I was confused. That's an understatement.
Any questions now?
No.
Okay. Uh, if there's no more questions, I think the, the next step would be to entertain a motion. If I'm not mistaken, that is what we're here to do, right?
That, that is correct.
That is correct. So, I'll call for a motion.
To approve the budget as published, would that be the proper way to state it?
As presented, because what was published, I've changed that and I've reduced it.
So, I move that we approve the two thousand nineteen budget as presented this evening.
Yes.
And do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is, uh, item added to the request of the mayor, discussion of the two thousand eighteen budget document filed with the county clerk. A lot of the questions, uh, were applicable to both, dealing with the same area. So, I think the, uh, questions regarding that are, are answered with the exception of the, the overage of the five percent.
And then, that, that was done, uh, you know, last year, it's the first year I'd done it. It was done after the fact, uh, the budget been approved, there was, there was nothing that I could do to change that, so. Uh, we had to go with it the way it was. Um, and it, it, it stipulates in there that that's, that's a statute violation. However, it's not punishable, it's not, it's just a violation that says, what do you do from there? You correct it going forward.
I think that it is punishable by removal of office, particularly the governing body. I think what we would need to do to make it clear would be to self-report, as in other violations. Usually, if it's self-reported, they just noted.
I don't know what you're talking about. If it's an audit issue, I think you let your auditors deal with it, and if it needs to be gone, anything from there.
And then, we need to draw attention to our auditors and let them advise.
Sure.
I don't think we should ignore it, because it does have repercussions for a budget violation.
It's always best if you're very open with your auditors.
Isn't that the statute? Seventy-nine, twenty-seven, can't get it saying?
Yeah.
Seventy-nine, twenty-seven. It just, it stipulates if you're in violation of, of that, uh, it could end up with removal of the governing body.
No, that's probably what it says. I think that's reserved for, you know, intentional, you know, somebody's intentionally doing something to maybe cover up the thousand or something. Every audit I've ever seen has been statutory violation. Very rarely do you see an audit with no statutory violations. Some years are more than others, like two thousand sixteen.
Well, just for the fact that I saw that, and first time sitting here, it got my attention.
Yeah, every ICC trustee, school board member, county commissioner, it goes through the same thing. You know, the audit, and they look at those violations and they think, you know, what have I got here?
Yeah, because they.
That's why we have audits.
And that's why we got statutes and ordinances, and they say specifically we're to follow the statutes and, and the ordinances, and I know on, on some cases where they've, that if we violated a Open Meeting or Open Record Act, it's best to self-report prior to them or somebody filing a complaint. So, that was my, like I said, my questions concerning the two thousand eighteen audit. Let's see, I, I did send some question, let me look. If, uh, it was a twenty, twenty sixteen, two thousand seventeen budget book, if you could email me that page. Mike, and show me. You said that you saw the.
I, I'll, the, the. Just the internal document?
Yeah, that'll just help me.
Yeah, I'll, I'll see what I can find.
Yeah, that'll help me understand better.
Got it.
I'll go back through it too and look, and.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah. Do you have, other commissioners have any question on two eight, two thousand eighteen budget document?
I do know.
You haven't seen it, probably.
Right.
One other question on that. Twenty seventeen, where did I put? There was some pages with amortization or indicating our, uh, loans, not loans, uh, our bonds, I believe, and, um, lease purchases.
Mm-hmm.
I don't see those included. They weren't included in the two thousand seventeen, and I, I don't see them included in here.
I, I, I went back and looked to see what had been provided in previous years, so I just duplicated that.
Yeah.
Asked Charlotte, and she said, yep, what you did last year, so that's what I provided her.
A computation to determine limit for two thousand seventeen, allocation of MVRV sixteen slash twenty, and commercial vehicle, um, debts, schedule of transfers, statement of indebtedness, statement of conditional lease purchase, worksheet for state grant and aid to public libraries.
Done.
Quite a few pages.
Yeah, there's, there's other tabs, yeah.
So, are those gonna be filed too, or?
Uh, like I said, they hadn't been previously.
They were in two thousand seventeen.
In two thousand seventeen they were? Okay, I'll, I'll have to look at that. What, what I saw last year didn't include that.
Last year didn't have them, but.
Or, I'm, I'm sorry, the year before. Last year, when I did, I looked back at seventeen and sixteen to see what had been provided previous, previous years, and I, that's.
Yeah.
That's what I found.
Yeah, two thousand seventeen.
Within our system.
Yeah, I, yeah, two thousand seventeen, that's what I looked at here.
Got it.
They were there. No other questions, then, uh, next item would be adjournment. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion that we adjourn. A second?
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried.
Thank you for working through this budget.
Yeah.